Opening tonight's meeting, we have seated Ryan Deasy, Chuck Sheen, myself, Ben Filbrick, Fred Dykman, Lynn Conway, and seated for tonight, ultimate Gary Belkey, who will also be seated when we continue the subdivision hearing later on in the two weeks from now. And then we have Andy Meek and Marge Salinger. Thank you all. Is there a motion on the minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes?
I think I heard Ryan first and Fred second.
Second.
Okay. Any comments, conclusions, deletions?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Keith?
So it looks like with the five regular members, there wouldn't be a need to see Mr. Belkey.
Okay.
But you know, if someone recuses themselves or something like that.
No, it's just thing for two weeks from now.
Yeah.
Yep. Thank you.
So first up, we have item 5B. Well, before we start that, I want to mention, if anyone's here for the public hearing for Whalers Inn on 11 Cotrell Street, that won't be taking place tonight. They've asked to reschedule that till the next meeting on June 21st. So first up, we have item 5B1, which is Stonington 2017 Hazard Mitigation Plan Progress Review. So the hazard mitigation plan was done by the Regional Planning Agency for each town every five years. It was last done in 2017, and an effort's beginning again by them with the help of CIRCA, the Connecticut Institute of Resilience and Climate Adaptation, updating it again this year. The town's plan is technically just an appendix to the regional plan. It's not really a standalone document. It analyzes the risk of natural resources and makes recommendations to deal with them. So the purpose of tonight's item is only to update the commission on where these recommendations stand. And there's a spreadsheet on page, page nine of the staff report. So this review is required as part of the town's recertification in the community rating system from FEMA, which gives property owners reduced flood insurance rates for the town's proactive policies with flood resilience. So the commission doesn't really need to discuss or vote on these recommendations. It's just sort of a heads up as to where they stand, and there's not any vote required on that.
Are there any questions from the commission? For Keith?
Well, if not, next thing on the agenda is item 5D, Administrative Review Items. 5D1 ZON 22119 Ocean Breeze Land Company, zoning permit application for renovation of a portion of the restaurant building's lower level seasonal bar, including the addition of 10 seats. Property located at 5 Williams Ave Mystic Assessor's Map 174 Block 12, Lot 10-3, Zone With this, they, this is the Rocks 21 Restaurant. They're looking for a zoning permit application to modify a portion of the lower level of the restaurant. It's an existing seasonal bar where they'll add an additional 10 seats, which still falls below the maximum number of seats approved for the restaurant, which I believe was 195 altogether, with a small addition under the approved deck. And I believe Mr. Nisopoulos is here to provide some more details.
Good evening. My name is Stefan Nisopoulos. I'm the architect for Rocks 21. This is a very simple thing. Basically, we have a seasonal bar on the lower level, which takes care of the outdoor seating when patrons sit outside. But since COVID, the outdoor seating increased dramatically. Everybody wants to sit outside, and the existing seasonal bar cannot accommodate the needs of those patrons right now. So what we're doing is upgrading the whole bar itself so it can accommodate their needs instead of running up and down to get whatever they need as far as drinks or food or washing the glasses and all that stuff. All the work is interior work within the existing building, existing footprint. Like I said, it is an existing bar. We are going to change some of the windows, some of the glass. We're going to put new windows or glass fenestration, as we would say. And it becomes basically, I know we get 10 more seats, but what it becomes is an area of refuge, basically. If it starts raining outside and people have to hide for a while before they throw their drinks out, I guess. It's a very simple project, basically. It's nothing, it doesn't extend the footprint, it doesn't extend anything, all within the existing lower level itself that we're doing the work for. If anybody has any questions about it, we'd be more than happy to answer, but.
Any question?
I do. Is there going to be any change to the exterior lighting down there?
Not the lighting. What will be, the exterior changes will be is we're changing the existing sliding doors and existing windows, we're upgrading all that. We may provide some additional enclosure windows to protect the wind and the, and the rain coming in when people try to get away from it. That's about it. But everything is what you see there now. You're not going to see anything different.
Will there be a kitchen down below?
No.
No kitchen?
No kitchen. It's only, like I said, it's only to be able to provide better service for the patrons that are sitting outside. Instead of taking 10 minutes to get them a drink from the lounge upstairs, we can accommodate them much easier here now.
And no outside music, correct?
No outside music, correct.
Thank you. Any other question?
Mr. Chairman, just one.
Yes, sir.
You said that the number of outdoor seats have increased. Has that come before this commission?
What I mean by that is that a lot of, the total seating capacity hasn't changed. We find that instead of people sitting in the dining room on the second level now, they would prefer to sit outdoors. That's what I meant by that, by the fact that it increased. The way people do dining basically increased in the summertime, changed in the summertime. They would rather sit outside than inside.
So how many outdoor seats are there?
I'm not sure off the top of my head, I'll be honest with you. But we're not increasing the overall allowable seating. I think we allowed 195, if I'm not mistaken, as a total seating. We're not increasing that. As a matter of fact, we're way below that.
All right. So as long as, as long as the total number of seats though increases.
No, we actually would be low that even with this, if you figure, if you calculate seating capacity for the new renovated area, we're still below the allowable seating.
Because that gets into other parts of your approval.
I understand.
You know, you don't, you don't want to, I mean, you could put yourself in zoning violation if you.
I understand that.
Okay.
So Keith, do you know how many outdoor seats versus indoor seats their restaurant has approved for?
Yeah, it was approved for 120 indoor, 75 outdoor.
120 indoor and 75 outdoor.
And some of them were on a deck extension, which hasn't been built yet.
Right. So the 10 is in addition to the 75?
Well, we're not proposing to do any more seating inside, but when you have the space available, you have to consider that it would be some seating there. Otherwise, you're not going to have open space. In other words, from a planning and zoning point of view, or from a building department point of view, they calculate the square footage of the area that you can have so many seats in there. So even though we may not put seats in there, we're not sure that we're going to put seats there. It's going to be basically an area of refuge in case it starts raining or drizzling, people are sitting outside on the lawn, they can come in for and get away from the rain. But we still have to consider that as part of a seating plan because the space is available.
Okay, so I'm just a little confused. I just want to be sure, and I understand what you're saying. You're saying people are sitting out on the lawn, it's going to rain, they're going to rush in to be underneath the eve so that they're not getting wet. However, right now, you have 75, you're approved for 75 outdoor seats.
Correct.
You're asking for additional 10 to make it 85 outdoor seats?
No, we're not.
No? Okay.
What we're saying, even if you calculate the addition, even if you calculate seating capacity for that particular space, which would allow approximately 10 seats because of the square footage that's available, we're still below the allowable 195 seats.
Okay. It's just that the way this is written, it says, including the addition of 10 seats. So the way this is written, it's asking for an additional 10 outdoor seats, which would be 85 seats. Whether that's what you meant it to say, and that's what you're asking for, I'm not sure, but that is how it reads. So perhaps what you're, that is not what you're asking for. Perhaps you're saying, including 10 of the 75 already approved seats? Is that what you're saying?
That is a better explanation.
Okay. And I think that needs to be, that text needs to be changed.
I agree.
So to put it in the motion, that should work.
As stipulation.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any other questions?
The outdoor music, was that in effect last year too, no outdoor music?
I believe, I wasn't involved in that part, so I'm going to just speak from what I know. That is correct. That was last year, that was, the issue was with loud music outdoors, but that's.
But it was, the rules last year too, it wasn't allowed?
Correct.
Was it ever addressed, did he?
Yeah, they haven't done it since, since they got the rocks.
The zoning enforcement officer got involved, right Keith?
Yes.
Right. And this commission discussed it also, and yeah, it hasn't been an issue since then.
Right.
And can I just ask one other clarifying question? Does any of this have to do with the allowances that were given due to COVID for additional outdoor seats? Or is this permanent outdoor seating for the restaurant?
This is, this is permanent.
That's my thought.
And these numbers of what they're allowed go back to 2014.
Okay. Okay. Just wanted to be sure. Thank you.
Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion to approve the application with a stipulation for the seating change to make it clear that that 10 seats would be part of the 75 outdoor seats.
Total.
Total.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. So item 5D2, this is temporary restrooms for Mystic Dog Watch at 20 Old Stonington Road. They've asked for that request to be withdrawn.
Okay.
They're not looking to do that. So item 6A, Old Business, PZ 2214 SPA and CAM Latimer Point Condo Association Site Plan and Coastal Area Management Application for a 10 by 6 shed and expansion of a roofed shower. Property located at 12 Center Drive Stonington Assessor's Map 154 Block 4 Lot 31, Zone RM20. So I think, you know, the commission's familiar with the Latimer Point process, where those homes all have the appearance of individual lots on the assessor's map, but the Latimer Point area is really a big condo association in the eyes of zoning. It's really one large property with different condominiums there. So zoning wise, the town's setback and floor area ratio and those other bulk requirements apply to the whole property and not just the individual units. Usually what they do is they sort of group together, different small projects come before the commission a few times a year to have them approve. This is probably the smallest one yet. It is just a 10 by 6 shed, an expansion of an outdoor roofed shower at 12 Center Street. No zoning issues with that. It's a CAM application also. We sent it to DEP, who did not return any comments. Recommended stipulations are just that zoning permit shall be submitted prior to construction, and that improvements shall conform to the Public Health Code requirements as determined by Connecticut DEEP. Because of the unique nature of the site, it's DEEP rather than Ledge Light that reviews public health code issues. This is not in the flood plain or the non-infringement area or some of the more sensitive environmental areas near the coast like other areas of Latimer Point.
Any questions from the commission for Keith?
Yes. So the fact that this appears to be right at the lot line, I guess if you could call it a lot line in a condominium association, doesn't count for this purpose?
Right, right. As far as zoning concerned, is concerned, they're right in the middle of the whole thing.
Yeah.
And they also have their own internal private rules and regulations there to keep people from infringing on each other.
That's a situation that's been formally recognized by the town.
Right, right.
Keith, did Ed Lally prepare this plan? I know Ed normally does the engineering.
He did.
I think he has a house there.
Yeah.
He did this, and this is all certified by him. This is just a little excerpt from that plan?
Right, yeah.
Okay.
And he's been updating their plans for over 20 years and keeps track of, you know, the floor area ratio.
He keeps track of the aggregate bulk use regulations.
Right.
And this still falls within the, the bulk use requirements, correct?
That's right.
Okay. This is a relatively small application. Like you said, they normally bundle a lot of, you know, different additions to houses and torches and whatnot.
Yeah, there's often new houses.
This is what I've seen.
Right.
Short time I've been here.
Stand alone.
Right. Mr. Chairman, if you're looking for a motion, I move approval of PZ 2214 SPA and CAM on application by Latimer Point Condominium Association, Inc., as submitted.
Thank you, Chuck. Do I hear a second?
Second.
It would be subject to the stipulations in the recommended motion.
Yes. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So carried. Thank you, Keith. Thank you, Chuck.
And that's it for Old Business, and it's just on to the public hearings?
Yeah, we are skipping over the.
Right, yeah.
Whalers Inn and going right to Brandon and Cynthia Flack, correct?
Right. The 7A for the Whalers Inn will be rescheduled to June 21st.
Pursuant to the General Statutes of the State of Connecticut Revision of 1958 and all amendments thereto, and pursuant to the zoning regulations of the town of Stonington, Connecticut, the Planning and Zoning Commission hereby gives notice that it will hold a public hearing at the Stonington Board of Education District Office, 40 Field Street, Hawkeettuck, Connecticut, on Tuesday, June 7th, 2022, at 7:00 PM on the following application, PZ 2213 SD, Brandon and Cynthia Flack, subdivision application for a 9-lot open space development. Property located on South Anguilla Road, Hawkeettuck, Assessor's Map 49 Block 2 Lot 1, Zone GBR 130.
Thank you, Lynn. Seated this evening, Ryan Deasy, Chuck Sheen, myself, Ben Filbrick, and Fred Dykman with Lynn Conway. And there should be a sign up sheet in the front of the room for those who would like to speak pro-con or in general comments. Those will come after we hear from the applicant, and then we'll hear those general comments in favor and opposed. There will be a rebuttal by the applicant, staff input, and board questions. So it's up to the applicant to step up, please.
Good evening. Nice to see you all again after our pre-meeting that I believe we did in early January, where we brought up the idea of our concept here for this land. My name's Brandon Flack. This is my wife Cindy. We also have David Cooley of DLC Engineering here with us, who prepared these plans. My wife and I have been residents of Stonington for 25 years. We purchased this farmland with the intent to build our home on it, as well as create some lots that we could then in turn sell. We have just created the lots under what's considered an open space development plan. An open space development plan, I think Keith summarized it very well in the minutes. It's a tool that allows us as property owners some flexibility in terms of the lot size and bulk requirements. In return, we have to give 50% of the land back as open space, permanent open space versus 15% under a conventional plan. We feel the open space is a very good fit for this land, as it protects the wetlands, it creates a permanent greenway between us and any of the abutting neighbors, and still leaves enough land for the development of eight lots, in reasonable size, the smallest one being 1.7 acres, most of them being about two. The largest one is a little skewed at six, but that's because we have to keep the percentage of wetlands in the developable area the same as the percentage of wetlands in the open space by the town rules. So there's Lot 8 is what we call the lollipop lot, where it's got a little stick that goes down and loops in a bunch of wetlands and balances that out. But realistically, I think anyone who would be interested in purchasing Lot 8, that land would, is almost unusable in that part of the lollipop. It's the, it's the deepest of the wetlands, there's a vernal pool in the middle of it, and there was no chance, I think, for anyone to, anyone who buys that lot realizes they're getting ownership of vernal pool, and it's just a nice thing that they can look at. But we did have a preliminary discussion with the board, where we talked about the conventional plan, and you all had some questions about the conventional plan in terms of how we had drawn the lot lines. We did take that to the zoning official to request her opinion for validity, and she said that while not ideal, that under the regulations, the way that rules are written, that it gives the developer an undetermined amount of leeway, but the decision of the practicality of the lot configuration is still up to the commission. So that's, I did, we have two slides here. One is the open space, which is the first one, and then the other one is the conventional plan, which shows the eight lots in a conventional format, only using 15% of the land as the, as the open space giveback, which we didn't feel was the best use of land, but we still felt it met all the zoning requirements of giving us a lot yield of eight that way. There is a little bit of confusion. We had some questions about nine lots. Some of the neighbors that we had spoken with earlier had asked if we had added an extra lot to the plan, and that was not the case. It's just the open space counts as a lot. So we submitted that as it was.
Did any of the frontage change, the road frontage change between the two plans for each of the lots?
It does change because the frontage is no longer a requirement under the open space development. So if anything, the, the frontage in the conventional plan uses almost the entire frontage for access, and the can, the frontage in the open space just uses the northern, two, northern two-thirds, let's say. But it's still left, you know, I think there's one shared driveway, and the other driveways still met all the town regulations for driveway minimums, and we met with the police department.
Thank you.
And there might be some folks that, you folks might see this. This is the conventional plan, and this is the, the open space plan, where it's talking about, this is the 50%, it'd be a permanent greenway, donated to, like, an avian horn here, it's going to land, that's chosen, that's trust interested in it.
So the parking driveway is, the, 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 the,[1564.13] the, 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 the,[403.12]
This is harder weapons. This included a lot of.
I see, okay.
They got the road frontage.
Yeah, some serious road frontage.
There's a lot of road frontage. That's kind of what that will be.
But anyways.
Are you unattending questions at this point? Do you have questions, Commissioner?
I have one. I count seven driveway access for eight lots here. And some really contortionist layouts of driveways and such to get there. And I wondered why you didn't just bring them into, you know, into a common driveway. So you only have three perhaps.
Sure. The, there's one shared driveway, and that's our driveway, which allows it to, the place where we plan to build. And then we're going to share that with the house to the north. So that gives them a little bit easier access. The other driveways were really built to take into account the stone walls and allow the houses in front not to have to share a driveway with a house in back. So the house in front could have a very short driveway, maybe only 30 feet. Whereas if we shared the driveway with the lots in the back, every driveway would be, you know, twice as long and probably not going right actually where the person might want to put their house. So they don't have to put the driveways there because this is all just, how do we call it? It's conceptual. So we're not actually planning on building the houses as seen right here. The houses will still have to come back for their site plan approvals when they submit for that. But we wanted to give the people buying lots as much flexibility as possible and not having to share a driveway allowed them to do that.
No, I, I think the applicant followed our instructions, and I appreciate that you did that, went to the zoning enforcement officer. I don't happen to agree with her. I, I looked at the definition of the word practicable, which, you know, the, her opinion is based upon. And I have tremendous respect for our zoning enforcement officer. And it's her call that, that we're going to go with here because when a subdivision meets the regulations, this commission has to approve it. And this one does. So, but I don't happen to agree with her opinion in this case. Practicable means feasible, realistic, workable. And this subdivision yield plan is hypothetical in the extreme. I've never seen anything like this in a, in a 50-year career doing this kind of work. But I don't think we can say anything about it. I think we're stuck because of the way our regulations are written and the zoning enforcement officer's opinion. So, well, I think we have to vote to approve this. And, and this isn't a negative to you. You're taking advantage of the regulations and the way they're written. I, I think we should change the regulations so that this doesn't happen again because, because of this quirk and because of this unworkable layout, this subdivision is going to be two more lots than it really should be. These lots that are connected by these long rightaways to the frontage on Anguilla Road are not workable and they're not practicable. And I've never seen anything like it. Like I said, it's hypothetical in the extreme. Having said all that, they've gone through the proper process. They did exactly what we asked them to do. The zoning enforcement officer has ruled in your favor. And, and this subdivision complies with the regulations. So I, I agree with one opinion that, you know, in her, in her opinion, and that is that it's, it, I don't know, we should call it quirky or something. And it really is. But there should be two lots less.
Any other questions?
You know what I, I can't determine is how far apart the driveways are. I mean, South Anguilla is a tough road. Thin road. There's no shoulder anywhere on that road. Got some places where it's windy. I know you're asking not to have a sidewalk, and I understand that because it's more of a rural road. But it's a dangerous road to walk on, certainly bike on. So how, how exactly close are these driveways? And the reason I'm asking, you know, I can see everybody coming out of the driveway, right? And somebody coming down South Anguilla, and they're like, oh, oh, there's a driveway there. And then 20 feet later, oh, there's another driveway. There's another driveway. I just want to make sure that there's no issue traffic-wise.
First, the specific distance between the driveways. David, do you have a number in your head there? I'll just address it first, though, that when, on our space of the land, it's amazing when we purchased the land, how long that 40 acres stretches out from where, our land literally takes up like a third of the bottom of South Anguilla Road. From down to the bottom of the hill where the wetlands are, and then you curve and go up to the left. There's really only one curve on our lot, though, of that 1,000 feet of road frontage. And that's the curve to the left. And most of the development starts at that curve and then goes up. There's, and it was pretty easy to see that we were going to have clear sightlines of well over 200 feet or so in each direction for any of the ones that we had sort of set up. I was actually kind of surprised at how long it was when I first sort of stood there and put the spots in, in place myself. But the exact distance between the two, I would, driveways, I would say there's, we've got it on the plans, so maybe I'll ask David to clarify that question.
I don't have an exact distance for you, but.
It's about 150 feet.
For, for the?
The driveways.
Five driveways.
That front on Anguilla Road. It's about 150 feet.
Between?
There's one driveway that's a little closer.
Right.
That's a little closer to the rear lot, which is, there's only like about 60 feet separating the driveway. These lots numbers are hard to read.
I think it's five. So there's lot two.
I haven't magnified.
And lot, the shared driveway for lot eight and seven, the rear lots. I would agree, that's about 50 or 60 feet apart. The other somewhat closer distance is between lot five and the driveway for lot six. And I'd say maybe that's 100 feet or so.
Okay.
And, and the town, Keith has asked for a sightline survey, and we're going to be doing that. But I, and I would emphasize that it's a relatively straight stretch of road. It is a country road, absolutely. It's downhill. So I, I don't think there's going to be a sightline issue. But if the question is how close are the driveways to each other, and there's going to be traffic jams between driveways, is that?
No, it's more of a sightline issue. I just asked.
Okay, okay. So we'll, we'll be completing that.
Okay. All right. I think it's important, again, just given, you know, the nature of the road and how the lots are all, you know, in, on one side of that 40-acre stretch. So just want to be sure that there's not an issue there. It's a tough road. It's a tough road.
No, I think it is a good question because driveways that are close together can be the cause of angular collisions.
Yeah.
And, and, and the driveways that are 60 feet apart raise the potential for angular collisions. It's not just sightline. It's the potential for angular collisions when, when you get people coming out of those driveways that are going in opposite directions. There's a potential for angular collisions. So I think that was the basis of your question, and it's a good one.
So I think it's just something that you're, you will have to address, right? Before it's completely approved, maybe we want to put in a, a condition on that.
Question, just because I thought any of those lots where they would build, they would have to come back to us. And that would be part of what they would have to propose is where they're putting their driveways? Is that what I understood you said?
They, they normally wouldn't.
Well, they wouldn't come back for the driveways or?
No.
Right. They would just get a zoning permit from our office.
There's nothing.
You could, you could put a stipulation that, that the driveways, I mean, there's, they do have some latitude on, on those driveways to create a greater separating distance.
Mm-hmm.
And you could stipulate that.
The other thing I was questioning, and I, I don't know, and I understand that this is, you know, this is conceptual, that you're not, you're not building these houses, you're not designing them. But are the driveways going into the road, would they be coming down or are they coming up into the road? Those are the things that I worry about on this road. It's a tough road.
Almost every one of them is flat, straight into the road. If we take a look at the elevations, I can't imagine any driveway that really has an upslope or downslope more than.
Yeah, the, the road is coming down, so the driveways are coming perpendicular to that downslope.
Okay. Because I know a couple on the other side don't do that, so, okay.
Yeah. There's some on our side, too, further north that are a steep climb to get out to.
Is there any precedent for the commission making stipulations about driveways like this? Or is this an unusual circumstance because of the, the frontage requirements are eliminated in the open space development?
Good question.
I'm just thinking.
Yeah, I can't remember, can't remember anywhere it's specifically been an issue. Of course, in other areas of town, you have houses that are closer together, but, you know, with this, I guess they're closer together on sort of a rural road where, you know, maybe speeding on the narrow road is an issue.
I mean, I certainly would point out that to the north of us, I don't think that there's very few lots that are two acres in size. So by nature, most of the driveways to the north of us would be much closer together than what ours, than the ones we're proposing.
But they'd be on a standard street where you have two 12-foot lanes and shoulders, and a significantly greater amount of room to maneuver around, you know, a situation that you do on, on this road, which is substandard.
I'm sorry, I was just thinking of South Anguilla Road, just the houses to the north of us on South Anguilla Road. I don't think there's very many two-acre lots up there.
Yeah, but doesn't, South Anguilla kind of goes like this. The road gets thinner. You're, you're talking up towards more, towards Pequot Trail.
Yeah. But I guess I'm not aware of the road gets thinner.
Kind of, maybe it's just a visual, feels like it.
Yeah, I mean, certainly the, the, the land hasn't been cleared back to the stone wall around our property as well. It's all overgrown right up to the road edge.
Yeah.
That could, could give it that feel.
Again, my concern is just, just for safety reasons, coming in and out. And I don't want to make it difficult. I just want to make sure that, as we've discussed this more, and very good question, as people come forward, they may not need to come to us and certainly not to review their driveway placements. So overall, you know, we've got to look at this holistically versus, you know, one lot doing their thing, and then the next lot does their thing. So I don't know how we would handle that.
We could ask somebody to widen the road. I don't think, that was, that would deal with the issue of a substandard street.
Would it please the commission if the driveways were more combined?
Can you talk into the microphone, please?
Would it please the commission if the driveways were combined when, when they were close? What's too close? From, on a straight road, you know, I know you're not saying it's a sightline issue. But if they're within 50 feet of each other, do we combine the driveways?
I think that's a good idea, actually. I think it's a very good suggestion. You know, the fewer driveways you have, the, the safer it's going to be. So that's a very good suggestion.
Seven does seem like a lot.
It does.
Well, but, but most building lots have their own driveway. But here, this, because of the configuration, there's an opportunity to combine.
I think so.
Them if you choose to do so. I don't know that we can require it.
And I'm not necessarily suggesting you widen the street either. I, I mean, it would be another way of dealing with it. But then you get into the situation about what do you do with the drainage?
Right.
And now do you build detention basins to hold back the runoff from the wider street? You get into a whole raft of, and we don't want to put you to that. We definitely don't. I like the suggestion of a fewer number of driveways and combining the driveways. I think it's a very good one. And, you know, the, the common driveway approach, I think, would be very reasonable. In a good way of dealing with it, at least from my perspective.
Any other questions or comments?
It's just definitely, the, the open space definitely creates a consideration of driveways, too. But if we, you know, the conventional plan, you know, which I think actually would have probably been closer to seven, you know, would still have allowed for easements going in and that sort of place. So we're trying to do the best we can with, under the terms of the open space development. Because there's so many other benefits to that versus, you know, if we can, I think, you know, if we look at the lots five, four, so lots five and four, and then lots one, six, seven, and eight, lots five, four, and eight could easily be combined into one.
Yeah.
And then it would just run right down the stone wall right there and divide, you know, go both ways. And that's the, probably the most dangerous one on the curve.
So that's perhaps what we could make a stipulation specifically.
That's.
To combine the driveway for those street lots.
This is.
Combine the driveway for those street lots, and we could make a stipulation.
Right. Correct suggestion.
Yeah, I need.
There's something I thought about, we don't have a plan before, just trying to maintain flexibility. But this driveway right here would be the only one that's on the downslope. This is lot five. So this is after the curve on the downslope going downhill. This house can easily be accessed from this driveway that's already going to this rear lot. And then this house right here is shared access as well.
Okay.
So five, six, and eight.
Five, six, and eight.
So I can't see the numbers, but it's the, the three ones to the right?
Yeah, five, six, and three to the right. So it's, I can see where it makes sense with, we do all, you know, great big stone wall, we're not happy to, and it makes natural lines, the driveway could run right along the stone wall. And that would be the option here, right?
Yeah. That's a great idea. And it's nice that you're keeping the stone wall. You know, it's beautiful.
Yes, it's a nice one.
Good. Public comments?
Yes?
Is there a sign-up sheet going?
Yes.
Can you sign in, please?
My name's Bill Rutan. I live at the end of Lane Way. And I'm, I'm probably the biggest abiding landowner to his flex property. And I'm, I'm all for the open space plan that he's brought up. I think, I think it, it's better for my property and me. But I also like the fact that there's going to be a big open space. And the lot sizes are still pretty large. You know, they're not what they would be with conventional zoning in that area, but they're still pretty big. So anyway, I just wanted, my, my support is for the open space plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Drew. Any other comments? Please.
Rick Newton, Meadow Lake Mystic. I serve on the Avalonia Land Conservancy Stonington Town Committee. I'm not authorized to speak for them tonight, but I'm speaking as a member that I can say that we have not expressed an interest in this property. So that was an incorrect statement on the applicant's part. There are grave concerns that I have personally on the quality of the open space. And, you know, the days of land trusts just taking property that developers don't want for open space are long over. There has to be conservation value. And we haven't discussed it yet. It's a lengthy process that we go through at Avalonia. It has to go through at least three committees. So it'd be a many months-long process before we say yes or no. And my other comment is that your regulations require a site plan that has, that shows the 24-inch trees that are going to be preserved. I don't see that site plan tonight. Thanks.
General comments? Rebuttal for the applicant?
Thank you. I appreciate that clarification. I did speak with David from Avalonia Land Conservatory, who's now part of the local Stonington Commission. And he did express interest in pursuing the availability of the land and what it would be. And his name was David Steiger from Avalonia.
He's the acquisition chair.
He's the acquisition chair. And so I didn't mean to say, we have not made any agreements with any land trusts, but we have spoken to two land trusts, and both of them have expressed interest in pursuing it further. I guess that should have been more clear. And then.
Trees.
Oh, the trees. I believe the stipulation says it's insofar as practical, with the developer shall maintain all, all trees over 24 inches. But the wording is insofar as practical. So I don't know whether I necessarily need to tag all of them on the plans, but we will absolutely be taking that into account. And the people that buy properties and build their houses there will absolutely have to take that into account as a regulation of the area.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Keith? Well, as was mentioned, this is an open space development, which is sort of an enhanced cluster type of development in our regulations where, in exchange for setting aside 50% of the land as permanent open space, the property owner gets a lot of flexibility with lot sizes and frontage and bulk requirements like that. The property owner doesn't get any extra lots, so it's a density-neutral regulation, but you do get that, that flexibility. As I think was mentioned, this regulation can be challenging because of the requirement that the open space can't contain a greater percentage of the wetlands than the whole property does. So that seems to be the reason that only two of these have been approved since 2006, because it makes it difficult to use. And if someone does it, they have to have one of the building lots become extra-large to swallow up a big portion of the wetlands, which is what they've done here with that lot five in the, all the way to the south there. Like we talked about with the subdivision, the lot developments are conceptual. The point is to show that they're buildable, can support a septic system, meet the zoning regulations. But, you know, the houses and the driveways don't need to be where they're shown on the plan. This includes a waiver of the sidewalk requirement along South Anguilla, which seems to make sense in this case. And as far as the ownership of the open space, the regulations say it can be owned by a land trust or a homeowners association of the lot owners, because sometimes land trusts just aren't interested in the open space. Whether the town can own the open space is a question to be determined because the subdivision regulations say that the town can, and the zoning regulations don't say that. So if it comes to that, we'll have to figure that out.
If this, if the open space ends up in private hands as opposed to in Avalonia, is there still the kind of access for the public to those lands? What are the obligations of a private owner of open space?
Not necessarily, you know, because the, the main point of it is the conservation. So there'd need to be a conservation easement over it if it's owned by the homeowners association, just to assure that it won't be developed or mistreated in any way. But the open space, I mean, public access doesn't need to be a part of it.
But we can make a stipulation on approval that if the open space is privately owned, to your point, Fred, that there will be a public access.
Yeah.
Easement granted or something like that.
Yeah, yeah, you could.
To benefit. I mean, that's the whole point, right?
Yeah. And, you know, when it comes to the land trust, sometimes they, they feel the public access makes sense, and sometimes they don't, if they feel that it can endanger the goal of conservation of the property. So this development is in the groundwater protection overlay district. And as sort of a technicality, they need to submit the groundwater protection permit, which is approved usually at the same time as the subdivision. Now, as a residential subdivision, there's not much particular harm to the groundwater. The regulations are more about commercial development. But they still have to apply for that, which would be accepted at the next meeting, which is why the hearing would have to be continued tonight to the next meeting. That's a bit of a technicality, but we send that to the water company, Westerly Water, even though it's not served by them, just to see if they have any comments, which in a case like this, they, they usually don't have any issues. As far as other comments we received, the Conservation Commission recommended the open space development. Ledge Light deemed the plan to be, deemed the lots to be suitable for septic. The Police Commission didn't have any issues with public safety or, or traffic. And we talked about the zoning officials' comments on the lots and the conventional Stormwater management report was submitted by the engineer. The town engineer still has to review the plan, so there'll be additional guidance from him about the stormwater management report or in the plan itself, but the hearing will be kept open anyway. And I, I think that's it here. I mean, there's recommended stipulations when this is decided upon, on page 32 of the staff report, which are pretty much standard ones for a, for a subdivision, the bonding and some of the boiler, boilerplate things there.
Keith, can we add a condition about, as we said, that if it is public, publicly owned, or excuse me, privately owned, that there would be a grant public access? And I think what's really important, again, just to capitalize on the fact that it's on South Anguilla, is that you will need two parking spaces because nobody can park on that road, right? So you're going to have public access to the back area. They're going to need a place to put their car.
Right, yeah.
So however, they've got it in their plan now. It's in the plan. But I think the plan is that Avalonia or, or another agency would take that over. But if that's not the case, we want to make sure it's in there.
Right, yeah, that's something we could, we could point out.
And also add that condition for the combining lot five, six, and eight driveway.
Yeah, mm-hmm.
Lot number nine, and then it would be number eight.
Lynn's would be number eight, and Brian's would be number nine.
Is it possible the town engineer would have his, his review done by the next meeting?
Yeah, yeah, I think he will. So you'll have the two new stipulations in the next staff report. Trust. Right, yeah.
Great.
So is the suggestion we should hold a vote until the next meeting? And we've got all this on our, on our ballot?
Isn't that recommended here, actually? Because it says the hearing can be held, but bus remain open?
Yeah, because of the groundwater protection permit.
Right.
And to be clear, the public comment will still be open with new.
Correct.
Evidence being submitted. Right.
So do we need to make a motion, or do we just continue?
Um, yeah, should be a motion to continue.
Adjourn, adjourn the public hearing till our next regularly scheduled meeting, correct?
Uh, yeah, continue.
Make a motion to continue this hearing until our next regularly scheduled meeting.
Thank you, Ryan. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Chuck. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's on our agenda, right, Keith? Um, yeah, that is, that is it.
It's still light.
Do I hear a motion about this meeting?
Make a motion to.
Thank you, Ryan. Second.
Thank you, Fred. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There we go.